Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming to the curriculum meeting. I'd like to call it to order. And what we're going to do this evening is have three presentations. First, we'll start with World Language. Then we'll move on to the update for the One-to-One Initiative. And then a presentation about Frey Fights. And so we're taping this for the benefit of the taxpayers. So we'll be having the presenter stand at the mic, please, so that they'll be able to hear all that you're sharing. So if we could start with the World Language group, please.
Christine Chapany is the facilitator for World Language 6 through 12 and her team. And I'll let her introduce everyone. The committee has been meeting for about a year and a half, looking at our World Language program and opportunities to improve and make sure that we're meeting the standards.
Hi, I'm Christine Chapany. Thank you for having us this evening. I'd like to introduce Maria Leonard. Maria teaches 6th grade Introduction to Language at Neil Armstrong. Tracy McCoy, she teaches French at the high school. Maria Marchiona teaches grades 7 and 8 Spanish at Independence. And our two administrators are Janet and Dave Minch. And I teach 7th and 8th grade Spanish and am the facilitator for grades 6 through 12. So this evening, we'd like to call your attention to our report. Maria is going to go through the website, but we made a Google site instead of doing the traditional armload of paper. We decided to try our technology and it worked really well. So I'm going to have Maria come up and address the technology and the site itself first.
Hi, everybody. Whenever we first met to put this document together, we had a stack of papers, probably that thick, from the previous report, which was from 2007. So it was really overwhelming. Some things we only had paper copies of, some things we had electronic copies of. So it kind of just made sense to move forward with the district in the technology piece and take advantage of the Google resources. So we went with a Google site. At first, it was a little bit scary, but Dave helped us a lot. We had some help from Dylan August, too, in terms of how to embed PDFs. We have Google Docs embedded. We have presentations embedded. We have links embedded in there. So it came together really nicely. And you can kind of scroll down this menu bar. You can see our department overview, our program overview for the various schools, some of our methodology. We have links here, not only for the people that are viewing this, but for the members of our department. So this is kind of serving as a place where we house all of these resources, authentic resources, authentic listening activities, speaking, technology. We have all of our scope and sequences for all of the languages at all levels in one place digitally, which is really, really nice, especially for someone who might be new to the district, whether they're a new teacher or a new administrator. They can kind of check out our site to see what we're all about and kind of take a look at why we do what we do. We also have our ACTFO, which are our National American Council on the Teaching of Foreign Languages. We have our Can Do Statements, which are kind of like kid-friendly proficiency statements. We have the Common Core in here. We also have a link to how our Common Core has been aligned with the English Language Arts Standards and our foreign language standards. So all of those things are really easily accessible. We have our proficiency guidelines. We have rubrics in here. We have our standards. And it's just a nice place to organize and keep everything for our department, but for the district as well. And this is where we're going to have the resources that help our teachers in our department kind of organize, plan the most effective lessons to impact our students in the highest way, most effective way possible, to get them to the highest proficiency level, which is our ultimate goal. So you guys actually all have this site shared with you. I sent you an email with the link. And you are able to view any Google Docs that are embedded in the site. You have access to those. So I encourage you to take a closer look at the site and navigate through it. And I think that's all I have. So I hope you enjoy it.
So as Maria said, you do have access to this. And we're not going to, we don't need to read to you, but we do have some things that we'd like to highlight for you. So first, I'd like to take a moment to have Maria Leonard come up. We're going to take a look at some of the recommendations that the committee has found and specifically highlighting certain curricular issues. And then I will also take a look at those with you as well.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to be talking about the curriculum update. And I need to go to the beginning. Okay, how do we get to the beginning? Okay, just go to the beginning. Here, now we can go to the first slide. To the first slide. All right. Somebody must have messed with this. Oh, I have to be here. All right. Since I like to talk a lot, I decided to make a PowerPoint. Because here, I'm going to be on task and I'm not going to be walking. Well, I can walk around. But I can stick to what I have here. So since I'm going to talk about the curriculum update, we find that the committee, the committee found out that we have several curriculums that need to be updated. And they are in a different state of, different state. The 6th grade exploratory, exploratory at Neil Armstrong, the middle in the high school, French, Latin, and Spanish. So all those needs need updates. So we're going to go to the next slide. So the committee recommends rewriting at, well, the district plan is in three levels. One level is rewriting. We need to rewrite those curriculum. Other writing. And another just, we just need to, we just need to revise. The writing of the committee, of the curriculum means that in 6th grade, we are working with two curriculums. Because before, we had 5th and 6th grade. Now we need to, excuse me. We need to have one, one curriculum for, for one, for that year and combine those two curriculums. For 7th grade Latin, right now, we are working with the first level high school. So we need to write a curriculum. Now, for the rewriting in middle and high school, level French, level 1 through 5 French, we need to work a little bit, but basically, we have the main framework. For the high school level 1 and for Latin is the same. And for Spanish, and for Spanish, it's about the same, too. We just need to make some changes. Now, for the next one, at the middle school, Spanish, it just needs revised. Meaning that it's very, you know, it's, it's working. You know, it works okay, but we could improve on it. We need to change to bring it up to date with technology. So, and we have technology implemented, but we want to make it even better. All right? So we're going to move on to the next one. Why do we want to, why do we want to rewrite this curriculum? Or, oh, or update this curriculum? Well, we want to bring all these curriculums up to the current national, to the current national foreign language standard in the ACTFO, which are the American Council of Foreign Language Teachers. So that way, we are teaching, you know, what is, well, we are teaching what is necessary and what will bring our students to the new era. Okay? And as Maria mentioned, that these standards are aligned to the Common Core standards, which make foreign language a great ally to the English teachers because we are reinforcing what they are teaching in their, in their classrooms. So we are like the right hand to the, to the English teachers, you know, in a way. We talked about the grammar points and we gave them, give students idea of what to write because we take the kids out of this context to farther away places as we teach foreign language. All right. Let's go to the next slide. Well, currently, some of the curriculums were written prior One-to-One technologies. So we, we need to, to bring that One-to-One technology, like for example, the Chromebooks. If we could put that into our curriculum, we, we will be sure that everybody, you know, is teaching the same, the same way. And we are able to use that technology to the benefit of all these students at all levels. So that's why we want to, to make the curriculum reflect that. Okay? Now, with the Common Assessment. The majority of, you know, of, you know, the majority of the courses are, we are using the Common Assessment, but we want to make that more unified. We want to make sure that every course is having the Common Assessment and that we have some way of having one, one Common Assessment that will help us to, to grow and measure that growth. Okay? And also the, you know, maintain the uniformed scope and sequence of each one of the length, of the students as they advance from first level to second level to third level. So we want all that reflected in the curriculum. This curriculum update would really help us, will give us the tools to get those students where we want to get them, which is to be a global thinker and a life learner, apply, a life learner of languages. Because mainly, that is our goal. They will learn a lot with us, but if they are motivated, that learning will continue. And they will come and come back someday and say, you know what, you know, would you tell me that in middle school or in high school, that had been amazing, the advancement that I had been able to get. So, thank you.
I am going to go back to the recommendations. And as we said before, you all have a chance to read this at your leisure because there, you know, you have access to it. Maria just spoke about what needs to be rewritten versus what needs to be maybe just tweaked a little bit. You know, the, there's four languages and it goes from 6 through 12. So some of them need to be revised. Some of them need to be rewritten. Some of them need to be actually written. So we're in a little bit different spot in, in each one. What I would like to call your attention to is, number one, which is that the district purchased the OWLS testing software for adoption by the World Language Program 6 through 12. And I'd like to explain what the OWLS testing program is. We were, we've had a number of opportunities to interact with the OWLS testing program. Janet and I first had that opportunity two years ago. And I, I'm pleased to say that it's a local company. They're out of Mount Lebanon. And the gentleman who's the CEO is Chris Alessandri. And he is a South Hills native. He started this program in maybe 2002. And right now, Columbia's using it, Cornell, Yale, University of California, Berkeley. University of Tennessee is using it. NYU is using it. And different certification boards are using it all over the country. And most locally, the Pittsburgh Public Schools are using it as well. I became interested in the OWLS testing program through the, some of my contacts with Pittsburgh Public. And I really liked the results that they were having. Their students were testing at higher proficiency levels. And the teachers were able to tailor the testing and the content for the students based on the feedback that they were getting. It's Standards with Assessment and Instruction. And it is a web-based program. We talked with Ron Reyer about this. And he was in contact with Chris Alessandri as well. So they worked out all the technology things that I don't even know how to pronounce most of the time. And I don't speak that language. But it's the fact that sometimes, and it should not be this way, but there are standards. But sometimes, we'll hear students say, well, I had missed so-and-so and I did this. Versus another student who says, well, I had missed so-and-so and I didn't do that, I had to do this. And that shouldn't be. It should be uniform. And the expectations for the students and the outcomes should be as uniform as possible. OWLS testing helps us to do that. It can be district-wide, 6 through 12. And it's specifically for world languages. We have, it's a online language assessment tool, but we can use it as well with any modern browser. So students are able to access this at home. And through their use with the One-to-One technology, this fits in perfectly with students being able to have multi-dimensional homeworks. They are able to take this, take the test at any point during their day as long as they have a computer. This also helps for oral practices and auditory practices as well. So it's not just, you know, something that they're going to be listening to. They're going to be actually interacting with this as well. It's authorable software, so it does come with ready-made ACTFO-aligned tests and practices. But the teachers don't have to use those. They're there if they would like to use them. It, there are user-friendly tests. But the teachers can actually create any kind of tests from, for the students in all of the languages as well. And in English also. You can use this for ESL. You can use this for non-traditional languages as well. This is not just for world, the world languages that we teach, but it's used for, by, it's used by the government right now for ambassadors and for abroad programs as well, for less commonly taught languages and to measure English proficiency also. It's very easy to rate and to score. One of the, one of the benefits of this program is that it's already aligned with ACTFO. So the teachers, when they're scoring, don't have to guess what the student's proficiency level is. Now, it doesn't score it for you, but it makes it so much easier. The teachers would need to be trained or retrained. Some of us are already trained and some of us are not in ACTFO proficiency scales. And so the teachers and the training, there is training that comes with this program as well. But that some of the teachers would need to be retrained or updated as well, so that they would be able to rate, have their ratings a little bit, I'd say, firm. The data aggregation, it's tied to your student information system. And so with our new student information system, we did have a chance to look at the SUNGAR program. And Mr. Minch was very helpful with that. We, we know that the SUNGAR offered an awful lot for testing. And we were very hopeful that they would have something that we would be able to use as well. Because currently, we're using, it's not exactly useful for world language. We do have our Common Assessments in there, but there are certain limitations. With the SUNGAR program, we were hopeful that they would have a little bit more. And unfortunately, they don't. Mr. Minch and Ms. Marchiona and I had the opportunity to go through kind of a sandbox information session with SUNGAR. And they, at this time, do not have the capability to embed any auditory or oral interactive types of situations at all. So we were not able to, to use the SUNGAR program for our testing. It's very easy to create. It accepts any clip art, movies, MP3, MP4, voice files as well. So for example, you can use, you could take the AP test with this. Currently, AP does accept MP3 and MP4 files. And our students who are taking the AP speaking portion would be able to use this for that as well. The test can be created for any novice level through intermediate, advanced, and superior. And most of our students come in at the novice level. We hope that by the time they graduate, if they've gone through the five years of the program, we're hoping that they test at an intermediate low. It's very difficult to get an intermediate low, but that's, we have had students achieve that. And so you ask yourself, well, how do you know they're an intermediate low? Well, because I've tested them. Well, how do you know that your test is reliable? There's a lot of question about that. So one of the things that OWLS helps is take that question out of the equation. It's, it's, you do not rate your own students. They're blind ratings. So you have a group of students, the none of whom are yours, and you're listening to their, their voice files. And after you've been trained, you're rating them. Now, the, the thing that I think is so exciting about this, and no one does this around here, and I would love for Buffalo Park to be the first to be able to do this. But when you go to an online school, there's a system of badging that occurs. And you acquire badges. At public schools, however, we don't normally give those types of things. We have cords when you graduate, but we don't necessarily have badges. One of the things that this would be, allow us to do is when you graduate from Buffalo Park and you've tested on your OWLS program, you would be able to have a badge or some sort of distinguished stamp on your diploma saying that at that point in time, this is where you were rated. And one of the benefits of that is that, number one, nobody else really does that around here, not even Pittsburgh Public. And who has been using this for a number of years through a grant. But the other thing is, is that, and Tracy's going to be talking about this in a moment, but when a student goes to university, you know, it's kind of a guessing game as to, well, do I need to take a foreign language again because I have four years? Maybe I don't need to take it? Does my major require it? There's a lot of questioning that goes on there. That kind of takes the questioning out of the equation. When you graduate from high school and you have this badge, because this is tied to the national standards, that's where you are. So you'll know if you do or do not need to take a world language in college and at what level. And that helps the students and the universities as well. This is an example of something that would be online. It would give you a prompt. And it would say, describe your childhood, where you used to live, the school that you went to, your friends, activities, sports, et cetera. And then when you're ready to click, you click and it's recording you. And that's something that would be a practice maybe that you could assign at home. But it could be something as well that would be, that is a portion of, of a proficiency test. This is what the online version looks like. And then I'd like to go to the link. And again, you all have this as well. If you'd like to find out a little bit more about this local company, what OWLS looks like, who uses it, what it looks like. There are samples here for true, false, short answer, completion. There's oral response. There are translation activities, Likert scales. There's all kinds of practices and tests that are held within this system. There I am. Okay, thank you. Okay. The further recommendations that we have beside the OWLS and the curriculum are held here. And I don't want to bore you by reading all 30 of them to you. But some of the things that I may highlight, let's see, are that the, number 10, that the world language teachers need to be trained or refreshed in the ACTFO proficiency levels. Currently, we have two teachers who are trained and who are certified testers. So the other teachers would, not necessarily, you don't need to be a certified tester, but you do need to be trained. The OWLS does provide, I want to say, the first year, 30 hours of training comes with the program as well. And there are also local conferences that, that teachers can attend so that they can brush up on their testing skills as well. Some of the other would be that, we've had this in the past. We did this last year and we'd like to continue, is that the AP language students from the high school visit and instruct the NAMM students for one day in collaboration with the NAMM's classroom teacher. We did that last year and it was really successful. The kids loved it. There was a lot of interest created. And they had a lot of fun doing the activities that the students planned. And it was a really nice introduction, I would say, before the students chose their languages for IMS. So that was really successful. We'd like to continue with that. We'd like to make sure that the AP exams are given electronically and that they are proctored by other world language teachers. Currently, this does not happen. And we would like for that to happen. It is, it would make things a lot easier. I'd like to remove all obstacles for students who are interested in taking the AP exam. And I kind of feel that not being tested electronically, when that's the way that our students are used to living, is kind of an obstacle. I think that that's something that we need to really take a look at. We'd like to partner with the Buffalo Park Community Center to possibly host a summer language camp for elementary school students. Since we don't provide an elementary in-school program, we'd like maybe to try to host, to see if there's interest in hosting an elementary summer program. A one-week camp through the Buffalo Park Community Center and see how that goes. We would like the students to be able to have the opportunity to experience different relevant field trips. We would like to place traveling teachers in world language classrooms. The presence of a language classroom supports the district's commitment to the study of world languages. And those are some of the highlights. I believe that one of the things that I did want to point out is the OWLS testing program comes with a cost. And it's expensive, but it is not out of the ballpark. Janet and I have discussed this. Dave and I have discussed this as well. And one of the things that the IMS teachers agreed is that we do not need new textbooks. And one of the things that the IMS teachers agreed is that we do not need new textbooks. We are currently, there are so many more rich resources that we have been using for the past two or three years outside of the Realidades, which is a good textbook, but it's not the end-all, be-all. We have a lot of fresh ideas, we have a lot of collaboration in the middle school. So we have decided to forego any purchase of textbooks at IMS, if that would help to defray the cost of the OWLS program, because we believe in it so much. The high school would like to look at textbooks, they aren't committed to buying them or not yet, but they would like to have the opportunity to peruse some textbooks. But at the middle school, all four languages have decided not to. Tracy, I think this is... I don't think so. Am I forgetting something?
No.
Thank you.
Hey, hi, again. I'm Tracy McCoy, I teach French at the high school. And, following the OWLS presentation, wasn't really there. It's such an awesome, awesome, I'm so excited about the possibility of working with this. And I think it will really build enthusiasm with our students and the proficiency, it'll really help us get a solid judgment of where their proficiency is. And as she said, that will help us with college requirements. That's the section that I researched, and it was difficult, I have to say, to find consistency across the board for college requirements. Every, I looked locally, non-locally, they were different everywhere. But, as a rule of thumb, most of them recommended three years of a high school language. And they preferred four, and then, of course, I push the students to go up to five if they can, we always want them to go as far as they possibly can. So I think the OWLS program will help make that a little easier for us to judge exactly where they are, so that when they go to the university, they'll know where they should place in their language. The other thing I just wanted to point out quickly, if we could be on the same page with guidance, is so many times, I can't tell you how many times, students have come back after they graduate and said, I wish I would have listened to you, you told me I should take another year of French, or you told me I should take another year of Spanish, and I didn't. And then I got to, I got to school and I had to pay for it, and I had to pay a lot for it. So I think if we're clear, you know, clearer about exactly how many years they need, or what their school will require, it will be helpful. That's all I have.
Do you have a question? Or?
I guess my question would be, if I'm going to use the technology in the middle school, why would I digress in the high school and be using textbooks? I mean, if I'm a student and I'm coming through the ranks, to me, I would see that as a digression. I don't know.
I have to say that I agree with you. I mean, my, my personal opinion is different than my professional opinion sometimes, but I, I think that because the high school is teaching more levels than we do, sometimes it's very difficult to look for and create the materials that you can find that textbooks have to offer. And they do come with great resources, especially now. I mean, now everyone's competing in the whole technology area, and especially with one-to-one, they're very aware of that. So I think because we're teaching two grades at the middle school, and we have, we're afforded the common planning time, which is so instrumental, that we're able to do some of the things that clearly at the high school, because there are five levels, four languages, and within those five levels, there are honors, and then there are the regular classes, I really feel like they need more of an anchor. And so I think that might be how I answer your question best.
Do you have a strategic plan as to how you will eventually implement that? I would not like to see us just stay that way. You know, gradually, we should be implementing it into the high school.
You mean, going without a textbook? Teaching without a textbook? I don't have a strategic plan for it. I kind of fell into this, and it has been wildly successful, I will tell you. We are getting wonderful results at Independence. We had a retirement, and I kind of took it upon myself, that since I was now the old lady of the building, that I had been reading and reading and reading about teaching without a textbook, and how they had been having great success in places where they have state standards. We unfortunately do not have state standards in Pennsylvania. So I started researching that, and when Maria was hired, she was, you know, very on-board with that. So the three of us decided that that's what we were going to do. And we spent every day together last year, and texting at night, and IMing and everything else at nighttime, so that we would be able to go in with a plan. And it was tremendous. We, because our Common Assessments were in place last year, we were able to look to see, you know, how our students were doing. And we were shocked at how good they were doing, and how that, that no matter which teacher they had, it, one day, this is how, and I said this to Mr. Minch one time, I was so excited because one day, our curriculum is so tight, that Ms. Marchiona's students were able to come into my classroom, and my kids were able to go into her classroom, and Ms. Sepulah, who was a perm sub last year, and not Ms. Sabit. I mean, we were all where we were supposed to be, all of the students, they were working on a project together, and they asked, you know, could we partner with someone in one of the other classes? And we talked about it, and we said, sure, we're all doing the same thing, we all have the same expectations, we wrote this project together, of course, that's fine. So for the days that they had to work on the project, it was, you know, we switched, and it was without, it was wonderful. And I've been teaching in Buffalo Park for 25 years, and I'll tell you that that was probably one of the most exciting, rewarding things that's happened curricularly, and I, and we've been continuing it this year. And I do think that it's, it's possible to do. It's difficult, but it's very possible to do. It is a lot of work, but it is possible.
The other thing, too, Connie, is, is Independence has had the foundation of using technology. They, they had the iPads, they then moved on to the Chromebooks. So they're a little bit ahead of the game as opposed to the high school, and that's going to be part of our presentation a little bit later, is the, the fact of the matter is, is they've had the experience of how the technology being embedded into the instructional practice can influence learning. The high school has not yet had that opportunity. So I think as we move forward, we'll, with exposure, as our, as our teachers get further exposed with the integration of technology in the classroom, and the students are used to that, that that, our programs will grow at the high school level, and then also downward.
Yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's one of our recommendations. We, it is, in our recommendations, it said that we would like to have an exchange between the high school and the middle school, so that we can have a better understanding of what each other is doing throughout the day. And we thought that that would be either, you know, a great part of a piece that might be missing, so that we would be able to help one another that way. So that's in our recommendations as well.
Any other questions?
I have a couple. First of all, you said at one point, this is a, this is a testing program, it's not a teaching tool, right?
Well, it can be used, it's called OWLS Testing Program, but I think, I think, to be honest with you, that that is how it started. But what we were, when we were exposed to it and we had the experience with it, that's just a portion of it now. The testing is just a portion of it. It is a teaching tool. You use it to raise proficiency with all of the practices, and then it, then you are able to rate the student at the end. So yes, a portion of it is a teaching tool, and then the other portion of it is the testing.
And you said, at one point, you said you don't rate your own students.
No.
So whose students do you rate, and who rates your students?
That's why all of the teachers have to be, it's world language teachers who teach that language. So I, they, they have it set up through the computer, they have the, set up that you, it's a blind kind of rating, so you may get, let's say there were 100 kids that were tested, you get 30. And a Spanish teacher from the high school might be rating mine, I might be rating someone's from the high school, and that type of thing. Because in, according to ACTFLE, you should not be rating your own students. It should be, because they feel that that's biased. So when we're, when we are trained, we are trained blindly. And I'm one of the teachers who was trained in being a tester, and, you know, that's, that's how it goes with the national exams, you don't rate your own students.
So how often during the year do you do this? Twice, four times?
You would probably do, I could see it, logistically, it would be wonderful to be able to do a pre, a mid, and a post, that would be great. I think at the high school, if we could get two times a year, because they are so crammed, I think that that would be great. I think at the middle school, we might be able to get it three times. But within those three times, there are all of the practices and the at-home types of things, or in class, it just depends. I mean, if they're going to be using, if they're going to be recording themselves and using it as homework or something like that, we could use it, but only test three times. We could use it twice a week.
But, but you probably, if you used it twice a week, you couldn't have somebody else rating?
No, 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 I'm sorry. The, the rating is only for the testing. That's where the rating comes in. The rating is only for the testing, so that would be done two times per year. So, but all of the other practices and things like that, you certainly can listen to your students, because that's how you can instruct them, you know, you know where their weaknesses are, et cetera, and diagnose, use that as a diagnostic, and then help them to be able to get to the next level.
And you, all of the schools that you mentioned were colleges except for Pittsburgh Public Schools, so?
Yes.
That was a little concerning to me. And you said the Pittsburgh Public Schools have a grant?
Yes.
Can we get a grant?
I don't know if we can get that type of a grant, that, the one that they were working under has expired. Upper St. Clair used this program for, I want to say, 10 years, and they were very happy with it. I asked their department chairperson why they don't use it anymore, and she said, because we found that we can do this with our own technology. That's what she told me. And I said, well, how is that? And she said, I don't know, I just said, this is what I need, and they gave it to me. So that was my answer from Deanna Baird. Ron?
I have to call a test being called Guard.
I have to do a SUNGARD interview. Why don't you have your age?
Yeah, in your spare time, Ron.
Certainly, we'll have to have it. Right now, I can't.
Well, I didn't know if I was supposed to do that, or you guys? Okay.
Because that was a thing I'm a doctor.
No, it's not, okay. Dave was just saying, should we tell how much it costs? And I said, I didn't know if that was my place to do that or not, because we do know. Okay. The first year, the, the cost is $35,000, and then it's, that's a one-time fee of $30,000, and then the $5,000 per year after that. So it's the one-time $30,000, and then $5,000. And it would be, that's for 11 teachers, so that would take care of the middle school, well, all the modern languages at the high school, the modern languages at IMS, and at least one teacher at Neil Armstrong.
And $80 a textbook?
Well, I'm so glad you asked. Okay, I will tell you, I will tell you that...
Sorry, that's...
No, no, I, I know, of course, we...
We had a plan over here.
Okay. All right, so, the figures that I have, and this is from when we did the textbook adoption in 2009 for French, because I, prior to that, I was not the department facilitator, so I don't really have access to some of those numbers. But what I can tell you is that it was $37,658 at Independence Middle School for French textbooks in 2009, and it was $62,538 for Spanish textbooks. And that was just Independence Middle School.
Wow. Yeah, $2,000, $30,000.
The online service is $30,000, one time, and then $5,000 a year maintenance.
Any other online resource that we can...
That would cost money? Any other resources?
We're not using anything right now that costs anything. At the high school, if they, and one of the recommendations that I do have is that, and I, I did show this to you, but it was very quick, as I said, at IMS, we decided that we would not be using textbooks. We use them as, we need them, but I mean, we are using bits and pieces, but we have created so much of a better, richer environment, that we don't really feel like we need to rely on one textbook. The high school teachers would like to have a look and possibly purchase textbooks. With that, there would be a cost for online, I'm sure, because I know that, you know, no matter what you are going to be taking a look at, it would be something that would cost. So one of the recommendations is that a representative from each language, at least from the high school, convene, so that they would be able to examine some textbooks and see if those are something that they might be interested in or not. So that is a recommendation. But I think the savings that you can see in textbooks alone, just from Independence giving that up and purchasing this, and I think that really says something, it should say something to all of you, that we really believe in this, and that this is something that we've really studied, we've been very thorough, we looked at, there is no other world language program that, that looks like this, there is nothing else out there. We looked, we looked at Language Labs, they didn't cut it. We looked at, we looked at SUNGARD, because we really were hoping that this could be sort of a one-stop shopping. And Mr. Minch was involved with that, he can speak to that as well, they just simply did not have anything for us. Our needs are very specific. We have, we, especially at the younger grades, we need visuals, we need lots of visuals, we need lots of speaking, we need lots of listening. That is how you become proficient in your own language. When you're a baby, you know, when, when you have your child, they don't even start putting together words, two words at two. I think, you know, those are kinds of things that are, that we all know as parents, and it's a very natural process. So when you go back and you look at that, that's hundreds and thousands of hours of children with their brain developing, of listening to English, so that they can become English speakers. So we need something, because our kids do not come from an environment where they're hearing Spanish and French and German at home. And what they, we do not live, we live in Western Pennsylvania, we don't have that particular cultural piece here, a little bit, but not where the students are, are hearing that constantly. So I think the savings versus the benefits is something that, you know, we feel really strongly about, and I know that all of the teachers who are standing here with me feel the same way.
A student choosing their second language is kind of like the sorting hat at Hogwarts, you know, early on. I really am impressed that you're going to drive this down into the elementary schools, I think that's mission critical. And I like that the fact that you're, you're going to shore up the curriculum in the middle schools as well. Every board member here is perked up when you said, you know, as far as the textbook savings, because it is a lean environment, you know?
I understand that.
And that's important to us. And we all bought in on the one-to-one initiative specifically for that purpose, so this is recurring, reassuring for me to hear. Comment also that you, you mentioned earlier, as far as, there were teachers in high school that take this one, it was easier in Spanish for this one. I come from a mixed, mixed marriage, so I speak Spanish, my wife speaks French. Our children of the six, two of...
I'm sorry.
Three, three are French speakers, three are Spanish speakers. But, you know, in college, you know, it was like, where do you start? There was no internal consistency, and I like the idea that this, this will address that. I echo the fact, it was one thing I was going to bring too, as far as what Pam said, grant money would be really nice for this. I understand the savings in the books, that's important, but I also perked my ears a little bit too, when, when you mentioned that this can be applied to other languages. Because we do have, we're looking at expanding the cyber school, we're very, very much interested in this. Chinese, Mandarin Chinese, Mavaho, Portuguese, you know, I think those could be applications for these. Farsi, yeah, those languages could be very much applied, we'd be very interested in looking at that.
Well, and, you know, I was on a committee a few, number of years ago, for the Elementary World Language Program, and we were, you know, we, again, that was one of the best committees that I actually have ever been a, a part of. We came up with a really nice program, a number of nice programs. But this is something that, whether you're expanding it into the elementaries, whether you're expanding it into some... you're expanding it into something that would be cyber, um, even if you're using it to test English proficiency. Um, Charles and I have had conversation about him using this as well, um, because, you know, this is something that is useful for all language. Um, it's, it's promoted for world languages, but it's useful for all languages. Um, English Language Arts, I believe, um, you know, Charles had some really good ideas on how to use this at his level and his department as well. Um, so, I, you know, I, we are certainly willing to share.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So, if you have more than eleven teachers using it, you have to pay more than?
There is, but, you know, honestly, um, I would, I would, I, I can say this with about eighty percent certainty. Um, Chris Dallasandry is very motivated and we have asked him, he has come out here, we asked him to come out here, the first time Janet and I just did a, um, video conference with him. But, then when, you know, he knew that we were very interested, he lives in Mount Lebanon, he's driven here five times for us, he's done five different presentations, he's answered every single question. He threw in the eleventh teacher for us. So, I would guess that he is very open to this and, um, you know, I would say that we would negotiate. He would be willing to negotiate.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
How do you align the guidance department with your, your needs for students who might be interested in studying online? How do you, how do you make that work?
We talked about guidance department and we have been doing that recently. We were, we talked about my group.
Yeah, no, Mike and I, we've talked about that and I would say that, um, as much of a problem as that was in the past, I would say it's much better, really. Because I think we've had open dialogue, a lot of communication. I mean, Dr. Jay knows that, you know, that, that Mike and I have talked about that a number of times and, um, you know, I think we're pretty much on board. I think there had been some miscommunications in the past, to be honest with you, but, you know, so far, this year with scheduling, we had none. So, I would say that it's much better.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'd like to thank you folks for all that you put into the presentation this evening, it was very helpful, thank you. Most importantly, we appreciate all that you're doing with our children. And, now we'll be moving on, uh, it's ten of eight and we are hoping that we can do the next presentations and be out by nine. So, we're going to move on to the team of administrators here for the update on the one-to-one initiative plates. Thank you.
And, hopefully we are starting with the elementary. I'd like to invite the elementary teachers who have joined us, we meant to come up to the online line. One of the things that we talked about when we were first coming to you with this issue was what our goals would be. We did not set out as a purpose that we were going to purchase some sort of customized program that all teachers would use with all kids on the computer. Our goal was to have computers as a tool in the classroom. Our goal was to reduce paper pencil activities and replace them with engaged hands-on learning. Our goal was to have our children be computer literate. And, I have to tell you that the news is really good this evening, that's what we're seeing. We are seeing hands-on learning on a daily basis on the computers with the elementary model. We are seeing a reduced reliance on workbook resources. We are probably going to be eliminating spelling workbooks this year. I believe we're going to be eliminating social studies workbooks this year. And, what Shabani was saying about the time it takes to develop resources, that is very true. If teachers are going to relinquish print resources, they do need time to develop online resources. But, if we take it piece by piece and we start with developing social studies content that will be supplemental in place of workbooks to go along with the social studies chapters, we think that's going to be manageable. Now, we haven't, we haven't really talked in detail with our teachers yet about that particular issue. We have been talking about it generally and there's a lot of, we have a lot of resources already developed. So, I really have a lot of confidence that we're going to be able to go in that direction. The other thing that we're seeing is that the teachers are really into collaborating on the what, what they're going to be using and the how, how they're going to be using it. We really appreciate the ACT 80 days for the time that it's given them to work on that. But, as always, uh, we know that more training is needed and we are certainly planning for that. Uh, one of our, one of our resources is GoGuardian, we talked about it a good bit. Uh, I wanted to share with you some of the Lincoln data. This is something that you would see for all the elementary buildings. If you look on the left, we have a percentage of the sites that are used most. That twenty-two percent in the blue is Renaissance Learning, which is accelerated reader. That's been a long staple of the elementary programs. How many of you have heard anything about SunDog? Has anybody heard about SunDog? SunDog is that big red wedge. It is an online practice application for math skills. It's online nationally. So, on a weekly basis, they have regional competitions, they have national competitions. I have third graders coming to my office telling me this for two hours on Wednesday. They were first in the nation on, on long division. So, uh, that interaction with other communities and other children across the nation is so engaging for the kids. Uh, Google Docs, the big, the big orange wedge is Google Docs. One of our core tools is having our kids use Google and develop documents and share documents. If you look at the square to the right and you look down, partway down, you'll see two thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine, this is student data, this is student Google Docs from a member, the third and fourth grade in one building. I think that's remarkable, I think it's excellent. If you look at the bottom of that part of the GoGuardian dashboard, you'll see eleven thousand, four hundred and eleven searches by students. Teachers are having kids use these devices every day to search for content for what they're doing, every day. The timeline up the top, just to give you a sample, this is a week from March ninth to March fifteenth. And, those peaks represent different times during the day across the week. If you see where the one is indicated, there's a, a little circle where we have one indicating one measure, you see where that is? Of how many minutes? That low peak, that's a hundred and ninety-eight minutes. Look how much lower that is than all the, uh, we're talking minutes and minutes and minutes and minutes and minutes every day by our children in third and fourth grade, every day. One of the things that I did with third and fourth grade was to survey the staff. Actually, I had a hundred, I had a hundred percent response, fourteen third grade teachers and fourteen fourth grade teachers. The survey is available at this link. If you click on it, are, are we able to give the board an online copy of this PowerPoint? If you click on the link, it takes you right to the survey responses. And, we have so many sites that are favorite sites, teachers are using a remarkable number of sites. Their greatest success is with the kinds of things that you would expect. The kids are growing in dependence, kids are becoming more responsible for their own learning and that they are engaged learners and the teachers are seeing that. Uh, the next training, our teachers are all over the place in their proficiency levels. We see our teachers who are at the very beginning of proficiency with these issues. We see teachers who are steaming ahead. The collaboration puts one group of those teachers, we have the other group of those teachers and everybody's moving forward. One of the things that I was paying attention to is the one question that I raised concerns. Because, this is a process, it takes a long time, this is over several years, multiple years. And, of twenty-eight teachers, the concerns are the kinds of things that we expect to be working on. Time and training primarily. There's never enough training, there's never enough time, you know that. Time and training. Of the twenty-eight teachers, we did have two teachers who really feel like computers maybe should not be in the classrooms as much as they are. But, out of twenty-eight third and fourth grade teachers, I think that's a remarkable statement that we have that much support from the majority of our, our teaching staff. This evening, I want to introduce to you Katie Nishie. She's a new fourth grade teacher, not new fourth grade, but new Bethel Park. She is at Franklin, she's currently home with a vivid. And, um, she was so excited about the opportunity to share the information that she's joining us this evening. And, Mr. Jesse August is a third grade teacher at Memorial. And, they just want to share a little bit of information about what's happening in their classrooms.
As she said, I am home right now, I just had a little one like four weeks ago, this is my first child, so I'm, I came out tonight like my second venture out into the world. I actually put makeup on and did my hair for you also, I hope you appreciate my effort. Um, to the board, on behalf of my students, I just want to say, thank you so much for the support of the one-to-one initiative. My students love getting on their Chromebooks, they, we use them, we use them every single day in my classroom. And, these are just, this is just a list of several of the things that we, we use our Chromebooks for. Um, pretty much in the elementary level, we're introducing them to Google, we're introducing them to, uh, how to use email, how to use, uh, the Google Docs, how to use even an Excel file, um, even though we are using the Excel in the Google Docs, they don't know how to use Excel. So, you, showing them how to, you know, add new files or right-click, even right-clicking is something new, we're learning at the elementary level. So, a lot of what we do is an introduction. Um, Education Galaxy, if you've heard of Study Island, I know some of the, um, the upper grades use Study Island. Education Galaxy is the exact same program, exact same model, but it's for the elementary school and it's a lot cheaper. Uh, but it does only go up to, to fifth grade, I believe, fifth, third through fifth grade. It's a, a website that the kids can log into and take practice questions, um, very much like they'll see on the PSSA. It's a good tool for me as a teacher to see where my students are excelling, where they might need some remediation. Uh, and they, it's fun because they get to earn rockets for their Education Galaxy and they really like to go on. I actually use it as a weekly grade for my kids. Raz Kids is another, is an, and, it's an online reading program. Each child is, I put my kids in the computer and they are reading on their independent reading level. So, I might have a student who's reading on a fifth grade level and a student who's reading on a second grade level, they can log into the website and they read all the books online. The lower you go, the books are actually read to them and then there's comprehension questions at the end. Again, I can pull up teacher reports on what, where are my students' strengths, where are their weaknesses, which really help me guide my reading instruction. And, that isn't, that is a ninety-nine dollar fee per every thirty-six students. Again, we're using Google Docs, we're using Hipara that has been introduced that I learned about at a professional development on our ACT 80 day. I'm using that, um, in my classroom. Google Images, how to search, how to search appropriately on Google Images, we learned about that in my classroom. How to use websites, you can see the little yellow box there, um, to the right is my classroom website. A lot of the links and games and activities we do on there, I just link on to my website and the kids can access that from home. Uh, also, you know, just learning how to navigate a website and how do you go back and how do you open a new tab, things like that are things we work on. Uh, like I said, introduce, introduction to a lot of, um, tools. Webquests where they go on and they, uh, actually independently can click through and, and fill out or create a PowerPoint or create a video. Um, and I use that as, to differentiate my instruction mainly for my higher students when they are interested in a certain topic. If we're learning about plants, I'll give them, okay, here's your assignment for your webquest, I want you to complete this when you have time and turn it in to me at the end. So, it's a way for me to engage those students who might normally be bored or ahead of, they're, they finished their worksheet in the first thirty seconds and now they're sitting there, okay, what do I do? You can go on, you can complete this webquest, which is fun for the kids to do. Um, and then just how, you know, learning about internet safety, because again, at the elementary level, it's really about how do we use computers effectively and how can we use them in a safe way that will enhance our learning in the classroom? And, that's, those are just some of the ways I use the Chromebooks in my room. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, as, uh, Dr. Stark said, my name's Jesse August. Um, I teach third grade at Memorial and, um, I think Katie did a really nice job of going over how they're being used, a lot of those things, um, we also do at Memorial, so I didn't want to repeat anything that Katie had to say. But, um, I just highlighted a few of the aspects in which, um, I use them in my classroom as well as some of the other third and fourth grade, uh, rooms as well. Um, I did want to say thanks also for the support of this initiative. I mean, the kids in my room in third and fourth grade are, are loving this, this extra resource and something that's, it's different and it keeps their, um, their attention peaked, you know, to be able to be using it throughout the day. In my room, I'd say it's probably, uh, every day, but not for everything all the time yet. They're not ready for that, there are still students who, who need, in the elementary level, of course, need a paper and pencil test. I've done some things to figure that out for my classroom, who needs this, who needs technology, who can use paper and pencils. So, that's still something at the lower grade level, I think, is not always clear to everybody, but it's a learning process for us as well as the students. Um, so, here's a few of the, uh, of the items. You'll notice that Gmail is up there, like Katie had said, um, basically introducing the kids to, how do you use email? Like, what is it actually for? It's not just for sending your friends a message. And, that was one of the first things a student asked, can I send so-and-so a message in the classroom?